Call to order in the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for August 25th, 2025. Ask that everyone that's here please stand and we'll have our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for the beautiful morning you've given us and somewhat of a touch of a feeling of fall. Father, we ask that you continue to watch over this county. We ask that you be with us. We thank you for the blessings we have, but may we always remember the blessings that we do have come from you. We ask that you guide us in this meeting. You give us the ability to look at the things that Rutherford County does need, and you will give us the ability to make decisions that are wise and for the people of this county. Thank you so much for what we do have. We offer this prayer in your son's holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the beloved or wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever being and ever after.
You may be seated. Madam Secretary, would you please call the row for termination of quorum?
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Goots.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Michael Shirley.
Here.
Jason Beavers.
Here.
Amber Brown.
Here.
Hettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do not have any minutes to approve this morning, so we'll move now. Public comments, do we have any?
No, sir, we do not.
No public comments. Items withdrawn or deferred?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The agendas you have on your tables list a preliminary plan approval for Boyd Property Subdivision. That has been taken off the agenda. The revised agenda is actually on your iPads. That is the agenda we'll be going by today.
Thank you. We'll move now into our new business, beginning with A, submitted for preliminary plan approval, Boyd Property Subdivision, 251005. Eighty-three total lots on 66.12 acres, zoned RM, located along John Bragg Highway and Floration Road. FD Nashville Incorporated is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Mr. Chairman, I do believe what you just read was the Boyd Property. That was the one that was taken off. Yeah, I would go by the, what's on the iPad.
Okay. I see it now. I have it over here on this one and this one right here. I got a multitude of them over here. Thank you, sir. We'll then move down and we'll go into, over here, one, the corrected, one that I'm looking at here, submitted for final plat approval. Item one, Duke's Haven Subdivision, 252053. Two lots on 5.68 acres, zoned RM, located along Bradyville Pike. William H. Toll Jr. is the applicant, includes a waiver for a lot of, a lot of less than five acres of a private easement. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you, and good morning, everybody. As some background to this, the applicant obtained building permits for a principal structure, which was 4849 Bradyville Pike back in February of 2024, and an ADU back in August of last year as well. The property is over an acre in size, so that ADU was allowed by right. The applicant had since run into some issues with their lending institution, and it was determined the ADU needed to be on its own tract of land. However, it did not appear that they could split it in such a way that both tracts would meet the minimum lot frontage requirements, which we do require 50 feet of road frontage, or the minimum size for a property accessing a private easement, which is five acres. So due to the location of the structures and their soil sites, they did ask for an off-site septic soil waiver, as well as the other waivers we discussed as far as the waiver for a lot of less than five acres off of a private easement. Those waivers were granted by the Planning Commission just a few months ago. So this plat is the result of that waiver request. So we cannot approve a plat that contains waivers administratively, which is why it's coming before you today. We did have some conversations with the applicant regarding a couple of things, one being the septic location, where the septic soils are. We have received some documentation from T-Dex stating that the way it's shown on the plat is going to be acceptable to them. There was also some comments regarding T-Dot, regarding the number of access, or people accessing that driveway. They originally were going to show a cross-axis easement between this property and a property directly to the east. They have since taken that off. However, just so everybody knows, even if this is approved, they will have to abide by whatever T-Dot says, if they need to do a commercial permit or whatever. But as far as our comments are concerned, this plat appears to be in good order. So any, we do recommend approval, just subject to the waivers being approved, and also, you know, any other staff comments regarding T-Dot or T-Dex or anything. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present.
Commissioners, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Doug, does, would this be, the easement to the back property now is going to be a dedicated, I mean, it'll, it, this is the same family, if memory serves me correctly. These were, the two units were in the same family, but should that sell, that back property will have full descriptive rights to the driveway?
Correct. Yeah, regardless of ownership, it'll have that, so that's correct. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Doug, review again, it's a waiver for off-site soils, a waiver for a private easement, and minimum road frontage.
Well, it's really just two. You've got the soil, and then you've got the fact that it's a lot of less than five acres. It couldn't meet the 50-foot requirement of road frontage, so that's why they're going with the easement, but that's not a waiver in and of itself. The fact that the lot is less than five acres is what the easement, or the waivers for.
And like Doug was saying, this 4873 will have to be removed from the driveway. They'll have to have their own driveway, because if you have three or more houses on a driveway, you have to upgrade to a commercial entrance here.
And according to the comments we received back on this, the, their, the T-Dots, they're going to make an application for 4873 to have its own driveway, separate from the one with the way it's shown currently.
So is this putting a burden on that, on that family? To build that driveway out? Because do they not have an easement as it sits right now?
The applicant is present, said he can speak to that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from the applicant.
Commissioners, anything else? If not, we'll ask that the applicant come forward this time.
Here's the original.
Give us your name and address, and speak to the commissioners.
I'm William Tao, 4847 Bradyville Pike and 49 at the current time. We've already addressed the driveway. I had the state come out there, with the highway department come out. They'd issued the permit, and I've already put in the driveway. They have a picture of it on 4873. I saw it a minute ago, but we sent one in. They already have a driveway currently now.
So the driveways have been separated?
Yes, sir. I sent a picture in on the requirements. I saw the picture up here earlier where it was added.
Okay, that was just a street view, but yeah.
Y'all had a street view up there from it.
That was the original driveway, not when the house was on Lot 1 of?
Well, I sent one in on the, it has been installed. It's right to the right of the fire hydrant, 25 feet off the other one.
Okay.
No, we're no longer sharing it, and we've been given the permit by the state, or the current owners have, somebody else owns that property. I put in the driveway myself.
I didn't catch any of that. It was all away from us. So this, you know, they're not sharing a driveway anymore?
No, currently, I mean, I built both houses. I'm a contractor. But I put in the 4873 driveway. Now, the other two, we are sharing it, the 4849 and 4847. That was part of the 50-foot easement that we have of the two-lot subdivision.
So the way that that's shown on the aerial right now, Duke, that's not, that driveway there, it's not sharing that gravel drive anymore? That's what, when you're talking about, it's got a separate driveway now? Okay.
It's 25 feet over.
Okay, very good.
But I did see a picture on there earlier where y'all were showing it in the street when I walked in.
Okay.
But it's got its own driveway now.
That's, that's the original, when the house was being constructed?
Yes, sir.
But it's over, the new driveway's over here now?
It's to the right of the fire hydrant. If you can see, it's 25 foot off of there, roughly.
This is before the fire hydrant, too. So it's over here somewhere.
Right, it's 25 foot from that driveway.
Okay.
Okay.
They've got their own mailbox and everything.
Commissioners, other questions for the applicant? If there are no more questions, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I've got a picture if y'all would like to see it.
Any more comments or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion, but I have one quick question. Mike, what, what is a commercial-grade driveway?
It's either heavy-duty concrete, heavy-duty asphalt, and certain widths that it's got to adhere to. I think it's, you know, two, 12 or 14-foot lanes. Well, the lane in would have to be a 14-foot and lane out, so like 26 feet wide. So it's, it's going to be a substantial driveway inside T-Dot right-of-way. Once you get in private property, it can neck back down.
Okay. So at the opening of Bradyville Pike, it will be much wider?
Yes, yes. If, if they had three or more lots on that driveway entrance.
And the applicant is aware that that may be something that they're forced to do?
Well, that's what he said, that he moved the, let me go back to the aerial.
Oh, so, so he may not have to do that because he's separated?
Right, he's separated.
Okay.
4873 has, it's got its own driveway now. He's saying it's over here.
Right.
Instead of connecting to this other driveway.
Okay, okay, gotcha. I would make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Have a motion approved in a second. Is there further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving down to item two in Davenport Station, Section 6, Phase 1, 252054. It's 29 lots on 18.93 acres, zoned RM and CS, previously approved CUP, located along Shevival Pike, VMCH Tennessee LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plat for this development, at least this section, was approved by the Planning Commission back in September of 2007. This section is part of the original conditional use permit that was approved for this property also back in 2007. This plat does conform to that preliminary plat approval. The zoning of this property is mixed, as you see, it's RM and C, there's a portion at CS, but however, it is governed by the approved CUP, which is how we've handled those older CUPs prior to the current zoning ordinance taking effect. Most of our comments have been addressed. Really, anything that's remaining is just a little housekeeping, a couple typos here and there that need to be taken care of. Besides that, this plat is in good order. We'd recommend approval.
Commissioners, questions, comments? If not, if the applicant is here, I'll ask that you come forward.
John Minor with SEC 850, Mill Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro.
Any questions for the applicant?
This is pictometry from, let me see the date.
It is? February of this year.
January of this year. So this, this section is still under construction. There's a big box culvert bridge that's going to need to be constructed. You can see the beginnings of the road. It's still under construction. They're going to have to rebuild sections of Oak Meadow and Fieldcrest Drive with this project, because they have, let me see, I can show you. They will have lots on Oak Crest and, sorry, Fieldcrest and Oak Meadow. So that, this will be rebuilt here, these sections, and then that box culvert bridge is right here.
So, so John, this being Phase 6, where, where are we on the total build-out? Two-thirds, halfway for the, for the entire Davenport Station?
Probably more than that.
Yeah, it's, this is close to being, I think, one of the last sections, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
There, there's some commercial out parcels that are still remaining, and you'll see some in here, too, but most of the houses have been built.
Okay. Yeah, so three, three quarters at least for the residential plot side of it.
Mr. Chair, I'm assuming these houses will be in line with the other houses that are built in the area?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, this, they just say that this part of the planned development, these lots were actually larger, this was part of the original planned development, so these lots aren't like the 6,000, 7,000 square foot lots to the south. These were actually like 10,000 to 12,000 plus, they're, they're larger than the, than the, than the, the planned development that was approved after that, after the new ordinance took effect. Mike, if you go over to the left a little bit, there's, there's a, a chart that shows all of them. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, they're all about, you know, 12 to, looks like 14,000, 10,000, I mean, anywhere from 10,000 to 15,000, 16,000, so they're fairly decent-sized lots.
There are no more questions for the applicant? Sir, you can step down. Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, and a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say no. It has been approved. Moving into Section B, submitted for site plan approval. Number one is overall creek storage, 253003. Construction of 15,663 square feet of self-storage space on 4.21 acres, zoned OP, located at 5418 Franklin Road, JLB Partners GP applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. This property was zoned office professional back in last year, 2024, and a special exception was granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals back in May of last year for a self-storage facility, which is what is being proposed today. Access is governed by T-Dot, as this is a state road. This part of the right-of-way is also within the city limits of Murfreesboro, so they will need to coordinate with the City of Murfreesboro for any permits regarding access to Franklin Road, State Route 96. Most of our comments have been addressed. There are some issues, I'll let Mike describe in a little more detail regarding the grading and some of the labels that they've got on there, so Mike, I'll turn that over to you for explanation.
Thank you, Douglas. So we had a few issues, we had to go back and forth, and they've been very helpful working this out. This whole piece of property, and I'll show you on the big screen, it's this parcel here, the yellow is city limits, so Franklin Road, this is the Kroger on Veterans, if you're familiar where that is, and Veterans is just to the left here a little bit, but it, the entire parcel is within the FEMA special flood hazard area, the 100-year flood plain, and then you can see what my assistant county engineer says, candy cane striping, which is the floodway. So some of the things that we had issues with were this functioning to meet our requirements for the flood elevations, and then also, we didn't want vehicles backing out into Franklin Road. So what we, we worked with the staff, and they came up with a, a three, three-point turnaround here, and I'll show you on the truck turning template, there's one, but there's another one here. So trucks, if you come in, the gate is actually sitting recessed a little bit here. It's not a huge project by any stretch of the means, it'll just be three buildings, but they recessed the gate here, so you can kind of see, there's the keypad here, and it's a counterclockwise flow. So vehicles will come in, and they'll access the gate here, and then they can go into the site, and then come out this gate right here. So it's, it's a counterclockwise flow, and if somebody comes in, can't, you know, access the gate, the gate doesn't work for some reason, they have a three-point turnaround where they can back into and then pull out straight onto Franklin Road. So they were good to work with us on that. And then the final thing was we wanted them to elevate the site to meet their stormwater requirements for water quality. They're doing pervious pavers and stone under, under, shoot, gravel underlaying, subgrade. So that's where they're going to store the excess volume of stormwater here. So it, it'll rain and fall into these pervious pavers, filter into the, the pavers, and then into these perforated drains here, and then go out a couple different locations. So we asked them to elevate the site, and they have done that, but we wanted this whole site to function with the, the area and flood stage. So when a big flood comes along, this is still going to function and be high and dry. So they have elevated it. One thing, we want them to avoid confusion. When they elevated the site, you can see these floor elevations are 60260, 60220, 60280. They still show the old minimum pad elevations, minimum floor elevations. We thought that might be a little confusing, so we want them to take that off or put it on special note somewhere else. These elevations do meet FEMA requirements and county requirements, but they don't allow this pervious pavers to function. So the pervious pavers would be in the flood stage, is what we're saying. They elevated it up to, to make it to work. So all that to be said, plans are in good order, other than just tweaking these notes and maybe taking them somewhere else on the plans.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Mr. Shirley?
Thank you. Mike, I'm still confused as to how they're going to do stormwater for holding water. Don't they have to hold their rainwater? Can you explain? Maybe I just, I missed that.
Right, so they're collecting their stormwater. Sorry. They collect the stormwater, the, the downspouts for the buildings will be internal, so they won't run out the back on this northern building or this southern building. They will flow into the pavers here, and then anything that hits this pervious pavers soaks in the ground and soaks into these pavers. There's the old-school pavers with gaps in them and stone, so how they meter the flow is through these outlets here. So they're holding back, they've got the extra stone layer just for volume. So gravel's got typically a 40% void space, so that extra void space allows them to hold that, that stormwater back.
So the, the, this, the base layer rock is not compacted, it's left with air gaps in it?
It does, yes, sir.
Okay.
Right.
And in a flood time zone, you're, how, at what level of confidence do you have that when the water, when we have a significant rain event and that creek leaves its banks, those, you're, what level of confidence do you have that those pavers are going to hold the amount of water and allow it to actually drain out if that is, because it's not going to perk through soggy creek-bottom soil, right? Is there, there's enough rock there to hold it all?
The infiltration in rock is, is in the, underneath the pavers. So that's, that's where they're storing it. That's their volume, that's their detention, I guess I should say.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's another, that's another big piece of it. We have to have a, a long-term maintenance agreement where these pavers have to be vacued out every so often, have to be inspected to make sure that it doesn't get clogged. So our summer intern program, we go out and inspect ponds, and these will be, these pavers will be inspected as well, because it's a stormwater management feature.
So the county has that, that plan already in place? We already have that program in place?
Yes, yes. So every summer, we hire four or five college kids and have them go out and inspect all these.
Okay. I have some concerns. I just, this is a project that, when I was looking at it, I'm thinking, this is exactly one of those properties that 10, 15 years down the road, people go, why in the world did they let development happen in a flood plain? And, and then we go in and end up doing buyouts and, and reverting it back to natural state to help with our stormwater management. I mean, this is a, if somebody wants to take the gamble and live in that house in a 100-year flood plain, good deal. That was way before I got on the Planning Commission, but now I'm going to be a part of making a decision where we're developing land that we know is in the 100-year flood plain, and probably, if memory serves me correct, a lot of that, maybe we could see some maps, that's just a really wet piece of property, and it's completely surrounded by the city. And my, my inclination would be to deny this, because I don't think that's where we should be putting development. And if they want to get annexed by the city and go through their processes and let the city be in charge of making sure that these pavers get vacuumed out and that this is developed in a way that's not going to affect negatively that area, that's kind of where I'm leaning.
So what, what we also do is, when they fill in the FEMA flood zone, they have to do a compensating cut as well, so they're not losing that volume, that storage volume. And I will get the plans back. So you can see these areas all around the site, they're excavating down to create that offset volume, so we're not losing that storage capacity. And you can see the floor is up around 602 and some change, .8, .6, .2. If we go back to the FEMA map, and it's hard to read, I'm sorry, 599.2. So FEMA says at 100-year flood elevations are 599.2. These floors are 60, 50, sorry, 602, sorry, I'm a little confused, 602, so a couple feet higher than the FEMA flood zone. And then that, those elevations, the, the pavers themselves are also around 602 and some, some change. So they're, they're sitting up higher than that. So that's where we were going back and forth. It's a challenging piece of property, yes, sir. I'm not going to say any different, but we believe they've met FEMA, county, and our regulations for flood and site development.
They received the FEMA letters back or anything?
They will have to submit after this, yes.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Along that same line, can you give me some idea of the elevation of, of Highway 96, Old Fort Parkway out there, and the bridge, culverts, drainage culverts, that sort of thing?
Yes, and I'll turn off, let's see if I can find the city limits. Got so many layers. You can't watch a pot before it boils, so you got to look away and then look back.
Mike, I may see something on PHC 3.0.
Okay, all right, let's go to that, because this is, this is dragging along, yeah. So you can see the, the street, there's a 603, this looks like a 60, can't tell if that's a 600 or 602, but top of castings of the, the curb inlets that are already in the street are at 601, 601, 601, and then, you know what, the street's crowned in a little bit, so it's a little bit higher in the middle here.
So you're saying the floor of this building is, is above?
Is above, yes, this floor will be higher than the street.
And essentially the curb then, right?
Yes, sir.
Top of the casting would be the top of the curb?
Well, the curb will be six inches higher than that, so it'll be, so 601 plus half a foot, 601, five. a foot, 601.5, so, yeah. And then they show these, these are proposed spot shots, 601.58, 601.35 here, there's a 601, 602, 602 around it.
So, you're positive they did compensate?
Yes, yes. They, they provide a compensating volume somewhere on the page. Might take me a minute to find it. I don't see it readily, but I'll, I will verify and double-check, yeah. What's that? Page one? Oh, okay. The design engineer's saying page one.
Commissioners, are you needing to talk with the applicant? Does the applicant need to come forth?
Yeah, there it is.
We'll give him an opportunity.
John Minor with S E C, 850 Milton C Boulevard in Murfreesboro.
Yeah, he's got, in the, right below the watershed information on the bottom of the page, he's got the 2.16 acre feet or 3,486 cubic yards of cut and 3,354 cubic yards of fill. And then he's got a net cut of 132 cubic yards. So, that's, that's in the flood stage. So, anything above that, we don't count, that is fill. It's above the flood elevation, so.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, have you been in this situation before where it's, your building totally in the floodplain?
Yes, yeah. It's more something that we do in the city probably than the county, just due to construction costs, but we have done it throughout Murfreesboro. Most of the time, it's not to this extent, but we have done a few that have been entirely, start to finish inside floodplain.
For those projects, could you, you haven't had any, you haven't had any issues with flooding in those areas where you've built a complete site that's in a floodplain?
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of. I've been doing it for 10, I've been working with S E C since 2014. I don't know that we've had a 100-year storm necessarily in Murfreesboro, but we've not had any flooding, at least in that, in that time period that I'm aware of. So, kind of what Mike was going off of in some of the questions about where Franklin Road is, the creek is flowing north in this direction, so Franklin Road will be kind of a damming effect, and once it overtops the road or it functions as it's intended to and goes through the box culvert, it starts dropping down on the property side. We have...
Yeah, they even include the, the profile in the, in the plan set, which is C 3.1 or the ninth page of 18 sheets. You can see what he's talking about. This is State Route 96, Franklin Road, and these are the various flood elevations. You've got 10% chance, the, goes all the way up to the 500-year flood over, over the road.
Mike, can you go to C 3.0 for a second?
3.0, okay.
Yeah. It's a little easier for me to understand this than the profile necessarily. So, roughly, the road, Highway 99, has a FEMA flood elevation of 601.2, and then the zigzag lines, as it goes north, are decreasing. So, the first cross-section after it crosses Highway 99, or 96, is 92, 99.2, and then on the north end of our property, it's a 98.9. So, it is continuing to go down. So, the lower side of the property is the potential over-topping situation. Normally, if it was going south, you'd look at the bridge, how would, how would the road act in that situation? For this, it would be going north, and to the north is open land, so 98.9 would be our over-topping elevation, and we're at 602.2, so we're well over, well over that spillover elevation.
So, several things as verification. We, as the county, when we're issuing building permits, there will be FEMA elevation certificates done on each one of these buildings, and then also, as part of our stormwater requirements, they will do as-built surveys of everything that's constructed. So, we'll verify the elevations of the parking lot, the buildings, the compensating cut areas, and then John will stake his reputation and his, his P E license and say, this is exactly what I designed and it meets all our requirements.
And the stormwater agreement will be filed before...
Yes, yes. And it will be filed with us, and that's, and then it will go into our rotation for summer inspections.
That stormwater agreement...
Yes, sir.
To be clear for everybody and to be in the minutes, that is a promise to maintain, correct?
Yes, sir.
That the developer slash owner is responsible for. So, you, you are sorta, kinda, you being the county, is sorta, kinda the stormwater police on that, because you will go out and do it, an annual or...
Yes, yes, sir.
But it is totally up to the developer to maintain those pavers and any other stormwater quality-related item.
Yes, sir.
If he fails to do that, and there is an issue, that is the 100% responsibility of the owner, right?
Well, we have some, I'd have to go back and look at the verbiage and get with our illustrious county attorney, but we have the ability to go in and do the work if they're not doing it and charge them for that work.
Okay. I, I guess what I'm trying to do is maybe ease Planning Commissioner Shirley's mind that it's not, the developer's taking the risk...
Yes, sir.
Right? John is taking the risk. We are getting the documentation that all things are as they're supposed to be, and we have a maintenance agreement that the owner is signing, so he's responsible. If things go awry, there's really no fallback on the county. It first is the developer, then it's John.
Well, and then the stormwater agreement, we have the ability to hire somebody to go in there, do the work, and then charge the owner.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I got a question, because I know we got another project out on 99. I know where this is at on 96, that we've asked the guy that's wanting to develop it to get a stormwater survey and what the impact's gonna be flood-wise and all this. It looks like there's a bridge there that's handling the water coming across from south to north. This guy's gonna have an issue on 99, similar to what I'm looking at here, and what's been determined, when the state built the road and it does flood, it's a baffle there. The, the bridge can't handle the water now, so it's a natural funnel until it reaches capacity, and then it starts really backing up. So, this guy's gonna have, do we know if, if there's any issues with that bridge already, being able to handle the flow of the water? And Mike, I'm gonna go back to what I'd said before that would help me, and I think it'd help Commissioner Shirley too. When we get one in these flood zones like this, if we could see the latest worst flood by the overhead satellite imaging, it might would help, because if I did my calculations right, it looked like the net digout, we said a minute ago, about 185 cubic yards, and just doing my math, saying 100 by 100 by six inches deep was the net excavation off of this site, that's about 185 cubic yards. It's not, we're not hauling a lot of spoil out of here to get that net of 185. We're bringing in and we're taking out, but really 100 by 100 by six inches is all the 185 cubic yards, if I'm doing my calculations right. I don't think we've seen the last of these flood zones. I'm, I'm all right with it. I mean, I understand what we're doing with engineers that's putting that stamp on it. I would just like to know historically that this site's not being flooded out above and beyond what the expectation might be. Do we need 300 cubic yards to dig out to make it? We're pushing that water somewhere when we see this. I know we're pushing it somewhere than the natural flow, and I, I do have to trust the guy that's got the seal that he's done his homework, but if that state comes in later and changes that trajectory of that funnel and sends more water, then it's gonna open up bigger issue than what we're saying.
So, here is the May 2010 flood imagery, which was two days after it quit raining, the big flood event we had, and, you know, floodwaters go up and then they go down relatively quickly, but I didn't see any water. You could see water still in overall creek, but, let's see, 19 was another heavy rain year. Takes a second. So, not so much, you can still see water in overall creek. Well, let it catch up. So, this area, I think it was a codes enforcement, we had to get them to go in and clean that up, so that's, so that's part of this project. They were storing stuff, unfortunately, in the floodway, which is a do-not-disturb area, and we had to get them to clean that up, and they have done so. But, so, we feel comfortable that they've done everything that FEMA requires, the county requires for this site, so.
Mike, can you go to C 3.1 again?
Okay.
The profile sheet.
All right. Let's see, where was that? See, I'm out. So, this is the flood profile that he's talking about.
Yes, sir. Just to your point, there's kind of an "i" in the middle, where there's text up at the top. That is where the, the road crossing is, and if you'll notice that there's kind of a jump vertically, yeah, there's kind of a jump vertically. That's where it's hitting the box, boxing going down to, to our site. The very topmost line is the 500-year storm event, which is .2% chance as opposed to the 100-year, which is 1%, so at the 500-year storm event, at least according to the current FEMA data, the stream elevation's about two and a half, where it's crossing, crossing 96, so we would still be basically in line with the 500-year...
Yeah.
Which, to your point, FEMA does change these maps periodically, so that, that would provide some, some buffering room.
So, this was reevaluated, this map was reevaluated in '23, May of '23. So, the, the floor of the building is gonna be at 602, which is this line right here, and it's gonna be this, this area right in here. So, you can see it's above the 100, 500-year elevation, so we're feeling good about it.
Thank you, sir. Further comments? Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Second, further discussion. Call the robe, please. Madam Secretary.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Goot?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Amber Brown?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It does carry. Moving now down to staff reports and other business. Mr. Moss?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You'll see there is one item for us to discuss regarding just the update to Plan Rutherford. You'll recall after our work session, after last month's day meeting on the 28th of July, we went through several items that we thought needed to be addressed in the plan, had a lot of good discussion on that. I relayed that discussion to our consultant team at GNRC. They did make some changes. I forwarded those changes to you probably about two weeks ago or so. I did hear back from some of you that seemed to think that what was being shown is, was online with what was discussed during our work session. On the screen, we've got a, the color renderings, I just did black and white for the handouts that I gave you all, but you'll recall that under the rural preserve and the rural living, you know, there was some discussion, and under the rural, I'm sorry, county suburban, there were some changes about the density and things. You'll notice under rural preserve, at the very bottom of the page, we had some discussion regarding the, the lower and higher-end densities, and what we discussed was putting some language in there regarding the voluntary agricultural district. You'll see that there was a little blurb added to the very bottom of the page regarding that. Regarding rural living and rural suburban, again, there was some discussion regarding the densities, and we did make some, some recommendations for some additional language to be placed on those. Again, if you look at the bottom of both of those pages, you'll see a little burp, blurb talking about the density range as provided as a general guide, says the resulting densities may be higher or lower depending on the unique circumstances of each parcel, including by the limited to available infrastructure characteristics of the proposed development, et cetera. You'll recall that that kind of alludes to the language of that application of policy that we discussed, which is in the plan, pages 55 and 56. And then the last thing we discussed was one of the, one of the proposed actions under Goal 3, enabling prosperity regarding affordable housing, making that a short-term horizon as opposed to a long-term. So, all those changes have been made. So, I wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with the changes as they are shown. Those were the only changes beyond like little typos and things that have been made to the plan. I didn't print any of those out, I just, these were the big items, excuse me, that we discussed. So, I just wanted to make sure that this was okay with everybody, and if it is, we can discuss the next steps.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Doug, the, didn't we talk about like on the county suburban, and I was reading as you were talking, I might have zoned out for a second, did we talk about describing what would need to be in place to get that higher, up to five residential units per acre? Did I miss that?
Well, no, there was some discussion, I recall, regarding, you know, urban, I'm sorry, more, if you're gonna have a higher-density type development, then there was an expectation to see those kind of improvements like sidewalks and things like that.
I don't see that in here, so I just wanted to make sure we were...
Okay.
Because, because we...
Well, and I think some, I mean, and I understand where you go, I think some of that can be placed in our, just our regulations. I don't think the fact that it's not necessarily mentioned in here doesn't preclude us from putting something like that in the regulations when those regulations are updated.
I just knew this is where people, we talked about, this is where people are gonna go when they're looking at developing, and I don't see anything here that says, hey, if you're gonna ask for five units per acre, there's an understanding that that neighborhood's gonna, even if it's, if we wanna leave it vague just so that it's in here, just as a five units per acre is gonna look a little different than three units per acre. We don't have to go... We don't have to go into details, but I feel like there should be said in, at least a sentence in there that says, to get higher density, you're going to have to make additional improvements.
Mm-hmm. Does something, higher densities provide an expectation of additional amenities or something like that?
Additional infrastructure improvements.
Maybe something like, or something like that, something along those lines?
Just so that it stated something that we can point to when we're looking at neighborhood regulations, go, hey, the intent was five units per acre was going to look different than three units per acre.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Doug, but wouldn't that need to be in the subdivision regulations?
That would be in the zoning, correct. That, I think what Mr. Shirley is referring to, saying that if we're proposing those kind of regulations, if somebody was looking for justification as to what we were basing that off of, we could point to the plan as opposed to just putting something in the regulation. I think that's what he's going for.
That is correct.
But would it be enforceable, though, just with a picture and not in the subray?
If it's just in the plan, no. It would have to be within the regulations to be enforceable, correct?
Is that not covered in the available, in the availability of infrastructure and the design characteristics of the proposed development?
I mean, it could be.
That's more general.
Right.
I think that covers. And then be specific in the.
Right. That's at the bottom of the page there.
Yeah, at the bottom. I think in earlier meetings where Doug sort of presented that this right here is your foundation, but it's not the exact of what will happen once you get zoning and regulations. And that's where a lot of these other things that you're talking about will come in and what you do there.
Okay. You're good.
If you think you have talked a lot about this, just wait till you get into zoning and regulations. You're going to have to start packing a lunch, man. I'm just telling you.
Well, so that brings up a good question. As we know, planning has no beginning and no end. So have you got a milestone or a calendar pontification on when we might be working on new subdivision improvement regulations?
The quick answer, do I have a specific? No, I don't. Now, realistically speaking, there are a lot of things that are going to have to be discussed. We're going to have to, as a commission, you know, with the mayor's office involvement and whatnot, we'll have to decide, okay, these are things we want to tackle first, using the plan as a guide, of course. You know, these are things we want to tackle first, these are the things we want to maybe push off. I mean, there's going to be a logical flow to some of these things. There's going to be some things that have to wait until, you know, other things are done first, prerequisites, if you will. That being said, we know that we're coming into an election season. You know, we're mindful of that. So, you know, whatever we come up with, you know, we'll have to be cognizant of what that timeframe looks like, so.
Mike, I don't know who said this first, but I've heard it several times. You know, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. The first bite is Plan Rutherford. You know, one step at a time.
Do we typically have an outside consultant help with the subdivision regulation rewrites, or do we do that in-house?
Well, it depends on what we're doing. Now, the last time we did the comprehensive rewrite, yes, we had an outside firm do those. Now, if we're talking about just coming up with regulations but keeping kind of the foundation, the framework, the same, I think that's something that could be done in-house. I don't think we have to farm that out. If we're talking about things like creating a, for the Rural Preserve, creating a voluntary agricultural district for the 15 acres, if somebody wants to take advantage of that, I think that's something we could do perfectly fine ourselves. Some of these other things that we're talking about, these recommendations that are made in the plan, I think could be staff-driven, staff-led, I should say. I don't think we need a consultant firm to do that. Now, if it start getting into this and it turns out, hey, we want to do a complete rewrite of the development regulations as far as our subdivision regs and our zoning is concerned, then yes, I do think that's going to require some outside help. But the things that we've been talking about, I think could be staff-led.
What's our, what's our next step then, Doug and Chairman, on this?
Well, if you're satisfied with what has been put in here and where we're going, I think our next move is for this committee to vote on whether or not we accept it, and from there, send it on to the full commission. But we got to set a date that we're going to do that. We're just not going to willy-nilly, all of a sudden here, vote, and nobody knows we voted on it.
Right.
We have to put it through agenda.
Now, we have had discussions as far as whether or not another public hearing we felt was necessary. With the changes that have been made to the language in here, especially regarding the density, we did change the density in the County Suburban, the lower end, just a little bit. But with the language that's in there regarding the density ranges that could be higher or lower depending on the unique circumstances, my personal opinion, and I know that Pettis can correct me, obviously, I'm not trying to speak for you, but we've had some discussions about that, I don't feel that another public hearing is necessary. However, I do agree with Chairman Reed that, yes, we do need to put this on an agenda as an agenda item, not necessarily for a public hearing, but for an actual decision to be made.
And Doug, I'm assuming, which is dangerous, I'm assuming that the development and design community has seen these changes that we are looking at now.
Well, Mr. Terry is here, and he got a copy of this this morning. Now, I sent the copy to you all first because I wanted to get feedback from you. Now, I mean, quite frankly, conversations I've had with Mr. Terry, I don't know if this is going to be something they're going to be amenable to or not.
Okay.
I think this covers us, quite frankly. But, you know, I know that the conversations I've had with him, again, he's here, he can speak for himself, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I know that there were some concerns about some of the language that was used and some of the changes that were or were not made during our last work session. So beyond that.
Okay. Okay. So our next move then is to decide whether we are comfortable with all the updates and then to go ahead and make it, make a motion to send it on to full commission for review.
Correct. Well, right. The Planning Commission needs to make the decision first.
Yeah.
And then at that point, the Planning Commission can say, yes, we want this to go up to the county commission for their consideration. And then that would be put on, you know, that'd be up to the county commission at that point. We'd run through Public Works like we always do and then go from there.
Commissioner Kush, you may remember the last time of the last comprehensive plan, the commission did not want it.
Mr. Chairman, could we put this on the calendar for our September the 8th meeting? Is that two weeks? Is that enough time for public notice?
Well, I mean, there's not going to be notice per se, like you're talking about, like mailouts or anything like that.
Right, just an agenda.
Yeah, we just put it with our regular agenda items. I'm not quite sure what next month is going to look like, just to be completely honest with you. I'm still having conversations with some of the applicants from last month that had things deferred or whatnot. I know we're going to have at least probably three or four. Again, this is not a public hearing item. Now, there's the ability to sign up for public comment, that's always possible, that can happen. But as far as an actual public hearing, again, I don't think one is necessary for this.
I was, the reason I was thinking about the night meeting is that it is easier for the public if they wanted to make a public comment on the record here, it's probably easier to do it at a night meeting, maybe.
Right, and I agree. I think it should be a night meeting. I completely agree with you. I just wanted you to know that, you know, it could be a beefier.
I personally am prepared to stay here an extra hour, Tom, if we can move forward with this. And I haven't even been on the commission as long as some of you working on this, but I feel like we've talked about this to where this, my opinion is that this body is in a consensus at least to move forward. So, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like for us to add it to the September the 8th meeting. If you need that as a motion, then that's my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion?
Chairman, do we need, do you need any type of a motion to include these updates in the plan?
No, I think that goes without saying at this point that, yeah.
I think it was mutual agreement to make those changes at the last work session anyway.
Yeah, I just going to go on the record, I will be supporting the motion in a second, and I also support the adjustments that you made, Jim, this morning.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Vogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Amber Brown?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion does carry. So we'll plan on the 8th of having this in the agenda, that we will vote on it as the Planning Commission and go that direction. And I think the general idea was to send this on to the full commission of how, if it is approved, send it on that way.
And I will say, the agenda, and that's, I'm sorry, it should say September 8th, not the 9th. I'll make sure that that gets changed. Don't worry about that. I just realized that. September the 9th, I don't know what I was looking at, but that's not right.
Okay, anything else that you?
I don't have anything further.
For clarification, Doug, does it go to Public Works?
Well, we would send this to, if, whatever, regardless of what happens at the Planning Commission meeting, I mean, we'll make a report of it at Public Works the following month like we always would.
Okay.
Now, any consideration, if the county commission does decide they want to bring this forward, we do have to advertise 30 days in advance. So probably what we would do, we would hold off until Public Works to find out, yes, they want to bring this forward to the county commission. And then we would say, okay, we'll advertise for 30 days after. That'd probably be, you know, at the earliest, we'd be looking at probably October for a county commission, just because of the time, statutory timeframes we have to deal with.
Okay. Any other business? If there's no other business, we are adjourned.